Hopefully, no one will know that there's a meeting at 4:30. Northern Virginia got 14 inches total. Oh, gosh. 14 inches of snow, and we had nothing.
Hey, how are you?
I think so. Didn't get that far down my emails yet. Yeah, I think Andy said yes, didn't he?
Andy did say yes, and I thought since we're having a meeting, we want to bring people all.
Okay.
Okay. And the dog part, people. See if they have anything new to.
Okay.
Okay. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. What's new? Could be, you never know. For today?
Nah.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, it'll be like in March.
Hi Judy, I see your head. There you are.
You don't mean the please, no. The defined benefit or?
The defined contribution.
Defined contribution.
That's the group that's left, that's.
The newer.
The defined contribution is the bigger group with.
Hi.
Yes.
Good.
My son, he needs it for his mer- mer-.
Yeah, there's 22 people in that.
Would you like to do this swearing in as far as the meeting, or would you like to do it now?
Yeah.
You?
Oh, and that's the.
I guess the future.
13 or a special winding down.
Hey, very good. Okay, so just raise my hand.
Just raise your hand and repeat words, and you're good to go.
Okay, I Harrison Scott Russell, do some, I swear that I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that will discharge the town supervisor, and he's in Philtown, so Lancaster County with fidelity.
There you go.
Cool.
Yep. Hell official official.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Eastern Philtown.
Yeah. Game myself.
Be a long six years, let him know.
We got you now.
I'm on Sarah Casey's Christmas card list.
Nice.
And real action items are the two zoning matters and then the fee schedule.
Yeah, well, there is actually that other one for Homestead Village, which is the certificate of approval for Lancaster Municipal Authority to be added to the agenda. It's just a matter of course. So it doesn't hold up their financing. Yes, those are the three action items. And then the discussion about the fee schedule, which you have before you. Assuming you want to re- you want to be part of that meeting with Ray D'Agostino when he reaches back out.
What's that?
Senatoral Road.
Yeah, that'd be good. When is that?
I haven't scheduled it yet. I told him to hold off until the New Year. When's your ties meeting?
Uh, it's actually, it's on here, I think it's within the next two weeks, even next week. There's two mi- two meetings too, he's got that municipal work group meeting too that he set up. It's uh, actually the Thursday.
Okay.
This is.
Pretty short.
How you feeling?
Every week.
Good.
Is he trying to meet with us before that, or?
He didn't really say. I just kind of thought it made sense to meet before the ties.
Until meeting, huh?
Help us out.
But you're meeting this meeting. You got.
Walker.
Two meetings a year.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna say something, Cindy, I'd like to pay raise for that.
I'm not surprised about, but still at this point, but not surprised. He's explained why we got the changes in funding for the other stuff, but not this one.
And it opens everything up again, so the bidding might.
Now, how's your healing process going?
That's what I was.
It's frustrating.
Well, our work cut out for some finance and I don't.
What I want to do, but they tell me another two months and I should be good as new. All right. Hopefully it plays that way. I'm not one for sitting around and driving me nuts.
Right.
Forgot my little dongle thing.
Off for your computer.
Have to steal one. Short supply.
I have one in my office, but.
Where is he? Yeah.
I may not need mine here.
Well, I don't think yours was down.
What do you mean? He's working on it. It's, it's sort of crashed.
I'll grab.
Yeah, this is for the advertisement. That's the one we were talking about, right? They track this currently some commercial and.
Right.
Yeah, I know. What did you hear about? I got Gina.
It's got issues. They were trying to buy a property.
Just.
John.
Yeah.
They were trying to buy.
Both have COVID.
Or they just. John does for sure. Oh, yeah, Gina does for sure.
Yeah, we'll do it again.
They both do.
So you're gonna have three angry homeowners there now can have this pop.
I think Gina is, I haven't talked to her, just heard.
So we'll be dealing with that. The politics, the other two or two ladies.
I mean, we're swamped over there right now. I have. Yeah.
14 people.
They have three, two and a half, three times the value of the property.
Still.
And they basically.
I already figured something out.
Whatever reason.
Question probably on the next payroll by the overtime.
So there's gonna be a little. It would have been nicer if we had no proper to deal with. Uses.
It's what, it's, it's.
Right there, right off the exit.
And it's low, it's low impact use, and it goes right to the air change. It's a perfect place for. Okay. So the fever. Running a little late, sorry.
Okay, you ready for Zoom? Good evening, or good afternoon. Okay, today's meeting has been advertised to be held in person online using Zoom with login and call and information posted on our website. For today's meeting, Robert's rules will apply and will be run by a chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. See, we've got just a few on Zoom. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order to be audio to be clearly heard. During the meeting, but those present online, only one person speaks at a time. They must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized by chat function, you must either be a presenter who's on the agenda, or a resident, or business owner in San Philtown, who wishes to comment on an agenda, and where you must text your name and address. For Zoom, any violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order. Your microphone will be muted immediately without any warning. Continuing violation resulting in being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules will apply to those attending in person. And right now, the people I see on Zoom are township staff. There will be no action taken on a non-agenda items, a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. Eastham Philtown's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner at a township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address when speaking, and sign the guest law for meeting purposes, or you must identify yourself in chat on Zoom. Comments limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda being discussed. No action will be taken on public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. So we'll now move on to the first MFR agenda. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge. Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seed. Okay, first step we have on the agenda, technically, we are reorganizing the Board of Supervisors today and doing a series of appointments. And very minimal action items being approved today. And so we are going to be reorganizing the board for chairman and vice chairman. I will not be serving as chair or vice chair this term going into this. Has been a pleasure being the chairman for the last two years, vice chairman for a couple of years before that, and then chairman before that, and vice chairman before that. So it's nice to pass the reins on at this point. It's been amazing where we've come over the last 12 years and how things in this, the direction that township are going and finances of the township, and excited about what the future is going to bring. So with that, we're going to be seeking nominations for the position of chairman and vice chairman. So the first position is chairman for the Board of Supervisors. And I would like to throw out on the floor for consideration Scott Wigglesworth for chairman of the San Philtown Supporter Supervisors.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Russell, and we have a second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schweitzer, could you poll the board, please?
Mr. Weaver?
Hi.
Mr. Bennett?
Hi.
Mr. LaFever?
Hi.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Hi.
Mr. Russell?
I, the eyes have it, five, nothing. And with that, that was my last official function. I am no longer chair.
I'll pass you the gravel, and you are, it's your show.
Thank you to Mr. Russell for all your service.
Thank you for the attention.
Thank you.
I echo that. Thank you, Scott. I would like to nominate for vice chairman Tom Bennett.
Second.
Ms. Schweitzer, can you poll the board?
Mr. Weaver?
Hi.
Mr. Bennett?
Hi.
Mr. LaFever?
Hi.
Ms. Wigglesworth?
Hi.
Mr. Russell?
Hi.
So up next, we'll have appointments by motion. It looks like the first would be for manager, secretary, treasurer. Ms. Schweitzer.
Mr. Chairman, if you wanted to go down the, the motion list, and you can do A through item four, A through B, we should take care of all those items. Manager, chief of police, director of finance, zoning officer, director of public works, and the emergency management coordinator, or you can do them individually. It's your choice.
Actually, I would even suggest maybe you ask this, is there any questions, kind of like consent, if anybody has any disagreement with any of the appointments, if not, we could just block vote for one. I'm personally, I'm okay with everything.
Everyone else?
Yep.
Mr. LaFever, are you good with those appointments?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes. These are all reappointments, right?
Yes.
Didn't see anything new.
So the motion is going to be for staff boards. You said A through E?
It's A and B. Item four, A and B.
Yeah, I'm even suggesting you can go all the way for all items on number four, A through I, if you wanted to.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I kind of was a little confused there. So, yeah, I would, I would prefer if we can do it A through I unless there's one that we need to pull out. Is everyone okay with the appointments from A through I?
Yes.
Yes. Just noting that item E currently is vacant. That gentleman did not desire to be reappointed.
Right, and we haven't been able to find someone for that position, correct?
He just notified us that there was, that he was not interested in being reappointed. That board rarely ever meets. So I almost find it difficult to find someone that's willing to be on a board that almost never meets, but we would have to do the advertising and do the process, but we could also hold that in, when we have the next opening, and then just do them both at the same time.
Okay. So the motion will be to appoint staff and board commissions and committees, items A through I, with recognizing that we do have a vacancy on the property maintenance board of appeals.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Thank you.
Discussion, please. Robert's rules clearly in section 38, reserve I, nay, roll call voting for particular installations where it's necessary to identify the particular vote of an individual, usually on a matter of some dispute concern, etc. I am going to suggest, there's a motion on the floor, so I can only suggest that we return to voice acclamation voting for this board, unless it is deemed necessary by the board or action by motion from someone on the board, that there needs to be roll call voting. I believe this will facilitate the matter and will bring us more in conformance with Robert's rules.
So if I understand what you're asking for, Ms. LaFever, you, you don't want the individual roll, roll call, you would rather have us.
Voice acclamation, aye.
Anything I'll just rebut with is the reason we went to roll call voting was because of Zoom. And when we do voice voting, and you actually have people on Zoom, they cannot clearly hear how the votes are occurring, so that's just to make it easier for those that are online. And if we're going to continue using Zoom, it'd be my recommendation that we keep that procedure in place. Sometimes we're going to have meetings where there's very few people on there, but also kind of times where there's people that are on there. So that was the whole reason for doing the the polling of the board process was to make sure everybody that's on Zoom can actually hear how everybody's voting and the vote is properly accounted for.
I recall one instance when supervisor Wigglesworth was absent and participated by Zoom, and one where you, Mr. Russell, participated by Zoom. To compound this board with roll call voting, when it is an exception that can be dealt with as an exception, I believe is incorrect. We should do, in accordance with Robert's rules, we should do acclamation, voice acclamation voting.
All right, so I'm, I'm indifferent on the matter, and I hope we don't get bogged down with this. Mr. Weaver, what's your position on this?
A little confused, I have to admit. I believe we should follow Roberts, but are we, are we saying that we don't want to reappoint?
No, sir, not at all with the motion on the floor. It's with our conduct as a board on all motions, where instead of the secretary needing to pause and doing the minutes by name and all of that, we just say that we are in approval, aye, or if necessary, nay, and the voice acclamation generally can be determined. And in many cases, most cases on this board, there's been a harmonious attitude that has been unanimous. There's no need for roll call voting in this board.
I believe we should follow Roberts, and so I will be with Mr. Fever then, I believe.
Mr. Bennett.
It's also my belief that we could at any time call for a roll call though, on, on any issue.
Okay.
All right, that is correct.
Okay, so I guess I'm okay also with, with a voice, voice vote, vote.
And I personally could care less, although just for the record, you, when we do roll call vote, we are following Robert's rules still, as being misstated.
Okay, so I think if I understand everyone here, and I don't think we need to take a motion to, to adopt this as our the way we conduct business. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. LaFever, excuse me, from Mr. Russell to adopt appointments, A through I. We have a second from Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you. All right, up next, appointment by motion for professional service positions. So it looks like.
I would request, given what's on there, that we actually take those individually.
So it looks like th- those are going to be our first two resolutions. Is that correct, Mrs. Schweitzer?
Under this, section five, no. On section five, they are just motions.
Okay.
For professional services.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm requesting that these get broken out by individual vote.
Okay. So let's take them one by one. For, is there a motion to appoint as our township engineer, David Miller and Associates?
Some of.
We're two associates. Ratu Associates as alternate engineer and McMan Associates as traffic engineers. Is that the one you want?
Yeah, just you cover all they, that's fine.
Okay. So we'll do David Miller and Associates first. We have a motion from Mr. Bennett. Do we have a second?
True, Fever did second.
Second from Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Do I hear a motion to appoint Ratu Associate as the township's alternate engineer?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever, second by Mr. Weaver.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Do you hear a motion to appoint McMahon Associates as the township traffic engineer?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, is there a second? Second from the chair. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries four to O with one abstention. Okay, motion to appoint the township solicitor and special counsel. Is there a motion to appoint Blankinger Thomas as general counsel?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to appoint all three. I've mentioned in item B.
Okay, for item B, Blankinger Thomas, general counsel, Campbell Durant Beatty, a special counsel for police and Post and Snell, labor council and special projects. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion.
Open that and call for discussion. And I'd like to address Mrs. Schweitzer. Have we had proposals from any other legal councils for these positions in the township? Annually, I think they might want to do some marketing and have we had any interest expressed by any of them to us?
We typically don't seek RFPs or FQs from these agencies unless I'm directed to do so by the board of supervisors.
I understand we aren't doing a request for proposals, but I thought there might be some spontaneous effort on parts of firms that would have an interest in representing us.
Actually, no.
Very well, then I, I'm answered. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that was made by Mr. Russell, seconded by Mr. LaFever to appoint the township solicitor and special legal counsel as just previously outlined. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, up next is the pension fund actuary. Do I hear a motion to appoint Gerard Pension Services LLC out of Allentown?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, seconded by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Appointment of Smith, Elliott, and Kurtz to perform the two thousand twenty-one township audit. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Who was that, Mr. Weaver? Or Mr. LaFever? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Acceptance of the following professional rate schedules from Blankinger Thomas, Ratu Associates, David Miller Associates, McMahon Associates, and Post Snell. Do I hear a motion?
A motion and request for some discussion.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. And he's requested discussion.
Oh, oh, is it, if it isn't second, I'll second it. And I would question, are these the rates as twenty twenty-one? Is there no change in these rates?
These are twenty twenty-two rates.
But are they the same as they were in twenty twenty-one?
No.
They are not.
They have slight increases generally five to ten dollars across the board. Areas.
If there was a schedule, I overlooked it, so I did not see that.
Okay. There, there, there were schedules.
I see that now.
At that.
Very well.
And there are ten dollars an hour increases, which I think is acceptable. My, my only comment was McCormick Taylor does some work with us in township. Should, should they, should something be posted here for for them also?
McCormick Taylor works under contract, under projects. We don't have them do individual work for us at the present time. We have in the past.
Okay.
No, their, their rate schedule are locked in from a couple of years ago at this point with what they're in their contracts.
Right.
Is everyone satisfied? So we have a motion that was made by Mr. Bennett, seconded by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
With one abstention, Mr. Russell, so motion carries four, zero, one. Resolution. Zoning hearing board. Reappointment for five years. Andrew Luce, do I hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Weaver, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Sewage enforcement officer. Reappointment of Ratu Associates and Marvin Stoner as the alternate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett.
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. And again, these are resolutions, so the motion is to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, I showed two reappointing Ratu Associates, Marvin Stoner is the alternate sewage officer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Not. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay. Guess this one's going to require some discussion. Do we have any volunteers to serve as a PSAT's voting member at the convention?
I did it in twenty-one. I'd be willing to do it again in twenty-two if, if that's the will of the board.
I'm fine with, I'll be there, but Tom can do it if he wants to.
Okay.
Works for me.
So with that, do I hear a motion to appoint supervisor Tom Bennett as a voting delegate? And Scott Russell as the alternate voting delegate to the twenty twenty-two PSAT's convention?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, seconded by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. So I think the items B through F can be done under one motion, approval of banks for deposit of funds, established treasures, bonds in the amount of a million dollars, fundraising activities for fire companies, and the biweekly pay period for employees. My and invoice payment dates be the first and third weeks of each month. All invoices shall be approved at regular meetings with the exception of operating invoices, which shall be paid when due to avoid penalties.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. LaFever, seconded by Mr. Weaver, is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. This is, up next is the preservation of farmland resolution. And for this item, again, we are just acknowledging the resolution that was passed in two thousand thirteen and affirming that resolution so that businesses and those in the development community understand what our position is on property that is zoned agricultural north of two eighty-three. Did anyone have anything else they'd like to say regarding that?
Now, just something that when I was on the campaign trail was very popular with the residents when explained.
I do believe we want to continue to promote agriculture and agricultural businesses in the East Hemphill Township. Sort of sets our township apart from others, and I think it's important for the quality of life in our, in our community. So I'm fully supportive of, of this resolution.
Okay. So do you hear a motion acknowledging resolution thirteen oh seven designating the board's historical and current intention to protect farmland and protect and promote agricultural and agricultural businesses in East Hemphill Township to preserve prime agricultural farmland and to preserve both the rural and agricultural character of the areas of the township generally referred to as north of two eighty-three.
So moved.
The motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. So up next is the supervisor committee appointment goals, and I'm going to ask that we table this for this current meeting. There, there's going to be some changes in my view. I need to take a look at some of the committees I'm serving on, which are going to require someone else to step up and fill in. So I'd like to reach out to you guys and maybe you can email me as well if you have any specific preferences as committees that you would like to serve on, and maybe we can tackle this at our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion to table by, or table the supervisor committee appointments by Mr. Bennett, seconded by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Okay, so now we're all into our regular meeting agenda. There was a request, Ms. Schweitzer, can you brief us on that from Homestead Village?
So Dan Blankinger, who represents the Industrial Development Authority, reached out and indicated that Homestead Village is in the process of getting some financing for their project in the township, and they started the process through Lancaster Municipal Authority because our authority did not have the, the, the dollar value that they were looking for last year. They had thought that it was going to settle last year, it is now settling this year, so it would have been free and clear, but because they started the process. So they had the public hearing. What you have before you in your packet is authorization from the host municipality, which is the township, indicating that they would approve and support the funding through Lancaster Municipal Authority. So I'm asking this to be added to the agenda so that doesn't hold up their financing of their project.
Is there any discussion or any concern with that from anybody on the board? I'm fine with it. Okay. So can we have a motion to add to our agenda? Homestead Village authorizing signature for their certificate of approval for financing their project through Lancaster Municipal Authority?
So moved with, and I do have a inquiry.
Okay, and this is just to add it to the agenda, so we know.
Oh, sorry, okay, right, then, then so moved, period.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Bennett to add it to the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. LaFever. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero to add it to the agenda. Thank you. Up next, the consent agenda. We have invoices and approval of the minutes from December fifteenth. Any issues with any of those two items? Okay, if none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stain.
So motion carries three to zero with two abstentions. Okay. Action items. Next, we have South Chickies Road. Four, three, South Chickies Road rezoning petition for agricultural holding, thirty-one acres enterprise, ten acre CBC zone to enterprise, plus a text amendment to modify access provisions. This is simply an acknowledgement. Right, there's no other action, it's just we're acknowledging this request.
It's acknowledging the request and it's forwarding it to the PCs, right?
Correct.
It's got missing in that part of the motion.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay. We have a motion for the South Chickies, to receive the South Chickies rezoning and text amendment request, motion to acknowledge the receipt request and to rezone the land, request, amend the zoning and forward this to the planning commission.
So moved.
The motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Up next, we have Route two eighty-three and State Road zoning text amendment to allow larger maximum building areas for self-storage facilities. The properties that are ten acres or more with frontage along a collect street in the CBC zone acknowledgement. And I see we have the applicant here. Did? Is there any discussion on this item?
No, no, I am.
Then do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the request to amend the zoning ordinance as so stated? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next will be the item that we added to the agenda, the Homestead Village resolution twenty-two dash oh three, authorizing signature on the certificate of approval for financing their project through the Lancaster Municipal Authority. And Mr. Bennett, I believe you had some discussion.
Just a quick question on the, going through the documents. And in the letter to, from Cindy from Blankinger Thomas concerning the hearing. We didn't need to have a representative at the meeting or at the hearing, did we?
That's correct, we did not.
It's just a formality, okay.
It was a hearing for the Lancaster Municipal, yes.
Just wanted to be sure about that. Okay, but it, but it, as far as anything else, I'm good with all of this.
Any other discussions on this topic? So do we have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh three, authorizing the chairman to sign the certificate of approval for the Homestead Village Incorporated borrowing through the Lancaster Municipal Authority?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. This twenty twenty-two proposed fee schedule review and discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to step you through the changes that we have proposed. So Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to step you through the changes that we have proposed for the fee schedule and let those kind of digest until the meeting on the nineteenth, at which point I'd ask for adoption of the fee schedule. So I did make some comments and some notes in terms of what has changed. On, starting on page one, we made the review, the plan review deposit uniform, so everything is seventy-five dollars. We had different values in there before. The zoning fee, we have increased from fifty dollars to seventy-five for residential permits. This is residential permit fee schedule. And then if you drop down to the bottom there, the stormwater management small project went from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty. The commercial permit fee schedule on page two, again, the zoning fee was a hundred dollars. That is now a hundred and fifty dollars straight down through. We also, let's see. The, the hot tub, spa and hot tub and the freestanding. No, I'm sorry, the freestanding and the pole sign and the building sign, there were no fees for that. We have now created those at a hundred and fifty dollars. The temporary sign was fifty, we moved that to a hundred and fifty. And then the small water project was three hundred, we moved that to five hundred. And just for context, this has been, we didn't adopt a new fee schedule in twenty twenty-one. This has been worked on throughout twenty-one. We've had looked at from our engineer, we looked at it through other, what other municipalities are doing, and these are kind of in line and on par with what other municipalities are looking at. Three, there is no changes that I've noted. Page four, hearings. We have bumped the escrow for conditional use and rezoning from a thousand dollars it was to fifteen hundred dollars. Generally, the consensus of the planning department is that escrows are falling behind in terms of keeping pace with projects that are coming in. So we're trying to boost those as best we can, and an escrow is used for engineering and solicitor fees and anything unused is returned to the, the applicant. On page five, on lots sewage. Those fees are not correct, those were last year's. I need to update that based on the resolution you just adopted tonight or today, so those will be updated accordingly to reflect the two associates' fee schedule. The subdivision land development on page six. Here, again, is, is the, the feeling is that the escrow deposits, we had a flat fee of, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars and a lot of the larger projects, particularly Brookside Development Project, anything of, of higher value, twenty-five hundred dollars, their engineering fees would be ten and fifteen thousand dollars per month. And so it just was not covering it. So what we did, we went to a graduated scale based on value of the project in an effort to kind of cover the cost differences. We don't have, we do carry a little bit, we want to carry a little bit less in terms of billing versus income coming in. It would make Joe much happier. Let's see here. The submittal fee for a sketch plan was four hundred and fifty dollars, as well as a minor plan. Those have been raised to six hundred dollars. The subdivision fees have gone from four fifty and twenty-five hours to six hundred dollars and fifty dollars for modifications and waivers. The biggest one, and the one that I'm kind of struggling with, this was a, a comment. We currently charge three percent for stormwater facility costs. The prior planning director had indicated his desire to increase that to five percent. After talking with the finance director, Joe Robinson, today, that account that we use to cover, we have two, two fees. The first one covers inspections of existing BMPs, existing swales and rain gardens and whatever it is. The second one covers MS four related activities. Help me out here, Joe, if I'm not speaking correctly here, but.
You're good to go.
Yeah, so the, the, both funds, I think, are doing okay. The actual inspection, the BMP inspection account has about six hundred thousand dollars in it. If we raise that to five percent, that's going to increase quite a bit. I'm not sure if we can justify that. And we have these fees to help offset the cost of stormwater costs down the road. So there is a, a theory that once the development has slowed, which it has, that those accounts will be used more readily. And, and they won't sustain the engineering costs that we have to incur to do those inspections on those facilities. So that background, we're, it's sitting here moving from three percent to five percent, so any feedback you have. I did check with the engineer, he, he, he said, well, you need to justify that two percent increase. I'm not quite sure how to do that. It's difficult to go to other municipalities because they all handle stormwater fees differently. A lot have stormwater fees that they charge to everybody. Others just kind of ignore it and just do part of their general fund. So comparing what others do is going to be difficult.
I would offer on that question, the frequency that we have seen recurrent inspections to reduce escrow, time and again where there seems to be a lackluster approach by the developer to really get finished and, and do the right thing. I think the engineer is appropriate in his assessment of what he might need there for that.
So that, that's that one. Page seven. The police department now has, under Act twenty-two, we are obligated to provide body cam footage. These are substantial investments of time and we have us, have developed a fee schedule that Chief Skiles has reached out to other municipalities and, and they have also mimicked them or, or are very comparable in terms of, of costs. So that's a new fee of that, that hundred dollar mentioned there three times. Also to point, the fingerprinting was free to residents, we are now charging twenty-five dollars because it's just time involved. Or we're suggesting twenty-five dollars.
Just had a question, confirmation report provided to victims and insurance companies, five dollars, so seems kind of nickel and diming to charge a victim five dollars to prove that the report was filed. Is that something we could waive? Insurance companies maybe, but just doesn't seem quite right.
I agree. Can I, the, the confirmation reports aren't the whole investigative report. They can't be released, but the confirmation report is often requested by insurance companies, bank investigators, et cetera. And that's just really to, to account for some of the time that we're spending researching the report, pulling the information and re-typing it onto a summary report.
Makes sense. It just seems kind of like a slap in the face kind of in a way to, to charge. Do we actually charge them five dollars to the victim?
Depends on, well, the, only the victim can receive the, a copy of anything. But in most cases, they're not needed. People just want a copy of it, and we're not allowed to give them a copy of it, so this was something that was created years ago just to show that they reported something to the police. I think, I don't know how long that fee's been there, it might, it's been there at least eleven plus years.
It sounds like we could deal away with, we so chose.
Not a lot of money, I mean, even to a victim, it just seems kind of like, not quite kosher, I don't know.
Well, if we're only charging five dollars, how much are we?
I'm sure, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not making any money on it.
But, and, and if we, if we felt in a certain situation that we needed to charge someone, could we do it under the request for police records?
The request for police records is strictly under Act twenty-two, which addresses.
That's specific to the law related to body camera and other videos.
Okay.
I think it was probably thrown in there as a catch-all because accident reports were mandated by the state to charge. If you're involved in a, in a crash and you want to copy the report, the driver and owner of the car are allowed to have a copy of it, but the, the state requires us to charge fifteen dollars.
So we're not taking action on this tonight, but maybe that's one we can look at just eliminating.
Correct. I'll check with the record staff to see if they have an, an opinion. I personally don't care if you eliminated it or not.
So the last page has to do with just general fees, and the most significant thing there is our fee schedule for the pavilion and the use of the park. And right now, we have a fee schedule that requires a deposit and then a fee. So the deposit is held with a separate check until after the event, and then it's returned if there's no damages. The, that is unusual for the township, for the, the county, that no one else charges a deposit fee. What I'd like to do is to simplify things and just get rid of the deposit and just charge the flat fee, which is the fee schedule you have before you. It, it simplifies things, it doesn't go resident versus non-resident, well, does, I'm sorry, it does do that. Thank you, that's what it was. We had a, we had it based on size of the group, so if there's twenty-five people out there, there's one fee. It was a hundred and fifty, it was another fee. This is just flat out a base number. Which simplifies things for staff in terms of tracking the deposits and also simplifies the fee schedule in terms of the residents or whoever's using the, the facilities and is comparable in terms of the fee structure to other municipalities that have these types of facilities.
So I just have a general comment about the whole structure, not, I just want to make sure that we're not overcharging or making things more expensive for residents than we need to. So like, does this reflect what our cost is for all of these items that we're looking at increasing?
That's a, a very difficult question to answer as a, as a catch-all.
And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot with, I just, I guess for me, you know, when, when people come in, I'm just looking at the average citizen and they want to, you know, a building permit for a hot tub or a deck or whatever it may be. I guess the cost of construction is up, the cost of materials are up. Are we, is this, I just want to make sure that we need this cost to cover our own costs, and we're not just raising it to raise it. That's where I'm at.
So for the most part, in terms of building fees and there are no changes. The only changes we're doing in terms of zoning fees is a slight increase. And like I said, this was done probably a year ago when it wasn't as.
So it looks like the signs, the hot, or the hot tubs went, I guess, from seventy-five to one fifty? And the stormwater small project application went from three hundred to five hundred?
And those are for commercial on page two.
Okay.
Residential is on page one. And we changed there, there is no change to the building fee on page one. The only change would be the, the zoning fee is fifty dollars. And we raised that to seventy-five. And then the stormwater fee is, is another fifty dollars more. But it depends upon the, the will of the board and, and what you'd like to do. We costs continue to go up. Wages continue to go up. We are, understand and we are sympathetic and understand the board's position in terms of keeping things low for residents. And I don't think that we are increasing these costs that are reflective of a negative thing towards residential people. Commercial, that's a little different. There's some more changes there. We are seeing a lot of, it was noted today, the reinspection fee on page three. TOA, it, we're causing, is causing us a lot of return visits by our zoning officer. And right now, it shows a, a building fee of seventy-five dollar reinspection. I'm going to be adding a seventy-five dollar zoning fee, reinspection fee. Cause he, he's having to go back out on a routine basis and not being able to charge for that.
This discussion kind of took off from talking about the pavilion. And there is a case where I'd like us to encourage residents to feel free to use this park. I have no trouble with charging non-residents, nonprofits who would be composed probably of non-residents. But if they can make the proper reservations in time to use the pavilion, I would prefer not to charge our residents for that, and I, I guess we might need staff to follow up, turn things off or on or prepare things a bit. But nonetheless, I, I, I'm sort of suggesting in my mind, maybe we should take this for homework to the next meeting and look where we as individuals think there's something we'd like to discuss more and come back with maybe what we might feel is a more user-friendly. I think Mr. Wiggle's worth it suggesting for our residents and things.
Yeah, the, the amount of money we make on the pavilion rentals certainly is, is nothing significant. It's maybe it's been a while since I looked at them, I'm thinking three or, three to four thousand dollars a year in rental fees for the pavilion.
I'm surprised it's that much.
Yeah.
But again, if we can save our residents from that, I think that would be appropriate.
I mean, just as I look at, at these fees generally, and I'm sure we could find something here that's maybe a little higher than it, than it should be. I do share Scott's concern about some rates being higher than others. One of the things I think we could do is, have we established what a cost is for us sending a zoning officer out to do an inspection? Do we know? Calculating is time, is labor, the, the equipment they might need to use. I think if we had for a zoning officer and a you know, if, if we knew exactly what that was, I think we'd be surprised that the rates are as low as they are when you come right down to it. So I think that's something maybe we could look at.
That's easy to calculate.
Finance.
Yeah, I don't think that's been done, at least not recently.
No.
But we can easily do that.
And every, and obviously, everything is going up. Everything that we purchase here from a township standpoint is increasing in cost rapidly. So I think this is something that we could dig into maybe a little better and come back with some recommendations maybe at the next meeting, as Scott would like.
I had one question on the escrow deposits. Do we have to pay interest back on them? Do they get put in a bank account? I know interest rates are really low, but that's not always going to be the case.
I think technically under the MPC you do.
Oh, sorry, too. It just, I was looking on page six, it just says this escrow deposit account, East Hemphill Township shall return any remaining escrow funds on project completion, so we are paying interest, but we definitely want to stay on the right side of the MPC.
Yeah, we don't hold escrow that long. Not that, not that kind of escrow. That usually flows pretty quickly in and out on. Not that, not that kind of escrow. That usually flows pretty quickly in and out on a every two month basis.
True, yeah, review fees, I think.
Yeah.
If there's any others, I mean, I like the idea of escrows because that covers, definitely covers our costs. Cause I guess that's, we have an outside consultant doing reviews and such.
Yeah, we have, we are carrying some, some dollars. Between billings that we have to pay out to say DMA or attorney. And we have to then wait a month, maybe six weeks till that comes back in. And the escrow would help that.
I guess, yeah, maybe I'm thinking more like the.
Let, let, yeah, line of credit, or not line of credit. Security deposits.
Yeah.
Escrow deposit.
That'd make more sense.
Salvo's escrows, yes, for the.
Longer term.
Yeah. So it's just an explanation. It's a work in progress. I think we probably, it sounds like Tom wanted to send it to the committee. Evan Finance Group and get some recommendations.
Definitely do that.
Okay. That's all I had on that one. Unless there's more questions.
Any other old business? New business? Seeing none, managers update?
So I've been out for the last two weeks, but I did want to give you two things. The, some of you already are aware, we were awarded the DCNR grant for the AHR Park Improvement. That's 152,000 dollars. So we have three years to spend it. We're going to have a meeting with staff to figure out how we go about it and what we're doing first, what we're doing next. That's the botchi courts, the parking area, some trails. And the second pavilion, which was the backside of the, the park facility. So that's happening. And the second thing is I wanted to make you aware that COVID-19 is impacting the township and staff more prominently than it did in the past. Chief Skiles has been struggling. He has several officers that are out for various reasons. And this side of the building also has been hit on a couple of occasions. So we worked on a policy, an updated policy today with Diane and Chief. And so we're good to go, but again, we're, we're experiencing some staffing issues.
School district was experiencing busing staffing issues today too, coming back.
Yeah.
About 10, 15 to 20% of the bus routes didn't have a bus driver set.
Wow. Yeah.
There was a lot of double shifts and a little bit of chaos picking up the kids this morning.
So far, we're pretty good in public works in terms of whether that might be coming towards us, but things could change quickly. And that's all I have unless there's questions that you have.
Well, as much as I, as many don't care to have dictated behavior. I like to go to the mask scenario is that we do it for others. I have no symptoms or anything. I'm wearing it tonight just because I'm in a, a group closer than I normally am. And it just makes good sense. I honestly believe we all are having COVID to some degree. It's a matter of our own personal health that preserves us or, or otherwise. But I just, it's about attitudes, I think, and I think we should have a positive attitude for, for the whole community. Yes, this will pass. And. I won't go to, go to religion on it, but I think we might look to some question there as to where and why this is occurring and come up with some answers. So anyway. Let's just think of one another is where I go.
Okay, any public comments at this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have been doing a great deal of in-depth. Thought of my involvement here in the township in this past month and how this township. Functions. And one of the things that I focused upon is consent agenda. We are stewards of this township. We are appointed, elected here to serve the residents of Easthamfield Township. We need to welcome them here to this meeting for their thoughts, their concerns, their complaints, possibly once in a while some praise. We need to do that at a time that's convenient for them, not what is convenient for us. And I am going to advocate strongly that we move consent agenda to the first item of business at every forthcoming meeting. And make it known to these township residents that we are here for them. If you want that as a motion, it's a motion. If it needs to be a motion, so be it. I don't think it should need to be. I think we should all understand and real reevaluate how we've done for whatever we moved it. Let's, let's think about our residents and get this back to the beginning of the agenda.
I appreciate that. I mean, that's not where I'm at with it. I personally like where it's at. And I see no need to move it. I don't know how everyone else feels.
Right, just to clarify, we're talking about public comment or consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I may have misstated. I am meaning public comment. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I, I also, I think a lot of times people that are paying an attorney or an engineer or someone. To sit, to, to discuss to the board, I think we should consider getting them up maybe sooner if possible.
Move the consent agenda down, yeah.
I'd have to think about that, I guess, but public comment generally doesn't go on too long, so.
Well, I would.
Once you get something off their chest, then.
I just throw a caution to that. Public comment tonight, obviously, there's probably going to be very little, if none. But we do get time to time when we have a group pop up here or there that has an agenda that comes to the meeting. With the sole focus of this is their podium, this is where they get to make their statements. They repeat themselves over and over again. And I just think it, it, it's a policy that worked. And instead of the meeting becoming a distraction or being taken over and used as a tool for somebody else's agenda. It's been kept for what it's supposed to be for. And if, if a person has something that they care to share with us. What's the harm in them sitting and watching and seeing how we conduct business and getting a little flavor for what goes on in the township? And waiting to present their argument or their petition to us? I don't think that's being unreasonable. And that, that's where I'm at with it. We have had problems in the past where people come, you know, we'll get 50. People lined up to say the same thing over and over again at the beginning of the meeting because everybody's here and they have an audience. And I really do believe that where we've moved it is at the right place. It deters some of that activity and I don't see it as a burden to the residents.
Yeah, I don't, don't really have a strong feeling either way, but one thing that I did just think of too is sometimes people want to talk about what just happened at the meeting. Like they may not have something on their mind at the beginning of the meeting, but after they hear something else, they may. Want to discuss what they just heard that night. So that would make more sense to leave it towards the end. So I guess I could go either way.
I, I just look at the, the cost to bring professionals in. And so. It's very easy for them to predict what's on the schedule, but the public, while the public comment period is always a wild card and you never know. What's going to happen? So that would definitely, I mean, when you look at attorney fees and engineering fees and all those other fees are. And to have an extra hour thrown on that wasn't anticipated, it could be a couple hundred dollars as someone's pocket. And we're not always talking about big commercial developers too. A lot of times it's small businesses in the township. So I think one positive came out with, with residents that have sat through. And a lot of times that they might have been hot about an issue, but by the time we got to the backend of the meeting and they got to see the township business and realized all the things that need to occur to writing the township. We've got many comments over the last couple of years in public comment that they appreciated the hard work and what the township's done. And it just seemed to kind of mollify things a little bit too. So I kind of would lean towards keeping it that way for those reasons.
My, my recollection, I, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to, to reorganizing the agenda a little bit. I, I do think there may be some merit in moving the. Development side of this to the front of our meeting and get, and get that out of, out of the way. I, I. I would, I personally would like to see the public comments moved maybe before old business or new bit or new business. I mean, you know, I just get it up here earlier. I, you know, when we have a controversial issue. Even if it's at the end of a meeting, you know, the hours, the hour or two is tacked on to, on to the meeting, okay? So I don't, I don't think the fact that it's, that we have it at the end makes it. Any better or worse. I, I just think on, on some level, we're here for the residents. Benefit and, you know, getting them in, giving, giving them their say is important. I think, you know, we have, we have a three minute limit on, on, on public comment. I think that's, that's sufficient even for somebody that. You know, I think, I mean, Scott did it on many of the controversial meetings that we've had. Scott did a, a great job in, in terms of. Limiting discussion. I think if we get, we get better as that as a, as a board. So I, I'd sort of like to see the public comments off the, next to the last item. And, and like I said, I think. Possibly, you know, reorganize the meeting agenda. Might be a good idea, just something, something to look at, whether we do it or not. I think we, I, I'd like to see more discussion about it.
Kind of, I'll be honest with you, I actually kind of like what Tom suggested, so that's not, my any concern would be the action items where you got faults. We. Once we get past that, I'm okay.
We do take public comment for each action item too.
Yeah.
So they do get some, not just a general, whatever's on your mind type comment, but. So there's that. And yes, I think paying, when you're paying someone to sit here, I think it's, you want to move that along. So I guess after thinking about it a little more, I, I kind of like where it's at, I think also towards the end.
Well, there is an old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And for me, where I'm at is it's not broke, but I'll happily entertain any further discussion if we want to take it up at another time. And take a harder look or a more specific look at moving it up. Okay, and while we're on the topic of public comments, do we have any public comments? Anybody online? Okay. Yes. Well, I think I'd like to use your line. Does a young man want to introduce himself to us?
He could want to come to.
Come up and tell us who you are and why you're here. Well, Thomas, it's great to see you here and appreciate you coming and not falling asleep on us.
You can help in any way, let us know. Okay, congratulations. Eagle, Eagle's a great goal.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. At 40.
My computer's done updating.
I'd like to get together with you.
That where I'm at, I don't know where you are.